Here.
Here.
Mr. Houghton?
Here.
Mr. Murphy?
Here.
Ms. Shelton?
Here.
Dr. Newman?
Here. One item before we get started. We have the pleasure of being the first in the city to use a new voting system, an electronic system that's designed to increase transparency, allow for easy access to city records and to allow you all and folks who may be viewing this from outside to clearly understand the voting and the processes behind what we're doing. So, this being the first attempt at this, bear with us. We have some other folks around to help us with some of the technology. So, we're going to do our best job today with this new technology and glad you all could be part of it. With that, we'll move forward. Item number one, from the continued agenda.
So, the first item on your agenda is a request by Netstone for a conditional use permit to operate a nightclub at 846 East Little Creek Road. Commissioners, the applicant has requested that this application be withdrawn.
Susan, can you get your microphone to work?
Thank you.
Better?
Better.
So, the applicant has requested that this application be withdrawn. So, the motion would be to accept the withdrawal of the application.
Any discussion? Are we ready for the vote? All votes have been casted. Any changes?
Okay. The chair, the commission has voted by a vote of six to zero to accept the withdrawal.
Okay. Thank you. Regular agenda, number, item number one.
Okay. Item number one is a request by Richard Katz for a change of zoning from IL industrial light to conditional CC, community commercial, at 8/11 through 8/15, 44th Street. The purpose of this request is to allow for a surface parking for Cogan's Pizza. Good afternoon, commissioners. This application is by Richard Katz. I think we're all familiar with the site. It's Cogan's Pizza, Cogan's Pizza North, as some folks call it. Site is located on the southwest corner of Colley Avenue and 44th Street. And as we know, Colley Avenue is a very commercial corridor with similar businesses with residential and industrial and other uses located to the rear of this commercial corridor. The applicant is proposing to demolish three existing single-family homes to construct a parking lot which will accommodate 22 parking spaces for Cogan. The site where the houses are and a portion of the site where Cogan's is located is currently zoned IL. So, the request would be to rezone these properties to match the remainder of the Cogan site along Colley Avenue, which is CC, community commercial. So, this is the site plan and just to let you know, this actually has been through the formal site plan review process. The site is also located in what we call a coastal resiliency overlay, meaning that they've got to do some things to accommodate storm water. So, one of the things they're required to do is to make the actual parking spaces pervious. So, you notice the pavers are pervious. So, they meet the requirements of, all of the requirements of the new zoning ordinance, the CRO or the CRO as we call it, as well as the landscaping requirements. Again, 22 parking spaces would be provided for Cogan's through this parking lot. Staff is recommending that this application be approved, subject to the following condition. The site shall be generally designed in accordance with the conceptual site plan prepared by WPL landscaping architects dated May 11, 2018, attached here to and marked as Exhibit A, including landscaping, pervious pavers, and a sidewalk abiding the site. And again, that's the site plan that we're looking at here. So, any questions that I can answer?
Here, on behalf of this application, is the applicant, Richard Katz. Any questions?
Yes, sir.
Also, here, Robin Thomas. No opposition to this item. Any comments, questions, commissioners? Mr. Murphy? All votes have been casted. Any changes?
Okay, Mr. Chair. By a six to zero vote, unanimous, the commission has voted to recommend approval of the request.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Katz. We look forward to joining you and the boys over there. That motion passed. We'll make that recommendation to council. Next item?
Okay. The next item is a request by James Flanagan for a right-of-way closure of a certain piece or parcel of land situated, lying and being in the city of Norfolk, Virginia. Said parcel contains 3,679 square feet or .04 acres, more or less, being a portion of Schumadin Road between 37th Street and 38th Street.
Good afternoon, planning commission. This is an application for a right-of-way closure for a portion of Schumadin Road. Schumadin Road is located in the Kensington neighborhood. This segment of Schumadin is between 37th and 38th Street, just to the east of Hampton Boulevard. To the north of this area would be the Highland Park neighborhood. Just to orient yourself, that the purpose of the closure is to consolidate the parcels on either side for a new development, which we'll hear about in the next item. The road does not serve or is unimproved and serves no transportation purpose and no easements were necessary. There are no utilities in this area and for those reasons, we would recommend approval.
Okay. Here, on behalf of the application, James Flanagan?
Yes, sir.
Be available for questions?
Absolutely.
Sounds great. Also, here, Delora Small. Are you here to speak or have questions?
No.
No? Just listen. Okay. Here, as an opponent or against this application, Barrington Gibbs. Would you like to speak? Also, against the application, Howard Gordon.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I'm Howard Gordon. My address is 999 Waterside Drive in Norfolk. I'm here today representing the owners of the NEXT, which is the apartment complex directly across 38th Street, as well as in coordination with Don Stamesbury over at Old Dominion, Dean of Students, as well as the Old Dominion Real Estate Foundation. At this point, we really don't know whether we're for or against what's going on. Left a message earlier from Ms., from Ms. Pollak, that we were going to appear today because I just got involved yesterday or the day before. Mr. Gibbs is the manager of the NEXT Apartments. But we'd like an opportunity to meet with the university and review the plan in connection with Hampton Boulevard plans, the traffic on 38th Street, and other items. And we'd ask that the commission defer this matter for 30 days, as well as items B and C that are also part of to the change of zoning and the increased density on that site.
Thank you, Susan. Move back into a rebuttal period, give the applicant an opportunity to speak if he'd like. Mr. Flanagan? Just give us your name and address for the mailing, mailing address for the record.
Sure. It's James Flanagan, 503 East Main Street, Richmond, Virginia, 23219. So, like the proponent said, he's not for or against the project. He doesn't know about it. We've been working on this project for quite some time and don't really want to delay the project moving forward. We have done a traffic study on the project and at 38th Street, it's saying that it's going to be about a 2% increase in traffic, which is minimal there. I think it's a great project, a great use for the land that's there. It's currently a blighted area. So, we would like this to continue and not be delayed. Any questions?
Any questions? Also, here, Ms. Small, did you want to speak or add anything during this period?
Getting ready to put up a five-unit apartment.
Come on up to the mic podium for me, please.
Let me stand up. Can I stand? Just stand up.
Sure. Yeah.
Just bear along with you. Okay. Thank you.
Whatever's most comfortable for you.
Okay. I live on 38th Street and on 38th Street it's been congested since they put up that ODU building in front of me. Excuse me, everybody. 38th Street is a problem. Now, they're getting ready to put up another building there. It's going to be another problem. And excuse me again. It's going to be another problem with another building coming up. I know that, I know it's a new generation coming up and I'm getting older. So, I'm looking for it. And I'm not going to be here forever. I'm looking for it. So, as the world, as the world turn, it's a new generation. So, now, when you, when you pay for your home, you look to be comfortable as the years go by. So, now, believe me, it's a, a problem with people moving in. And I mean, it's, it's a problem. People coming knocking at your door late at night, cross the street for Old Dominion College, and people knocking at your door 1 o'clock, 2 o'clock at night. And I'm, I'm looking for that other building coming up. And, oh, and I'm looking for another problem coming in. Because I'm, where I'm going at? Where, where, where am I going at? I don't work and pay for my home and I've been living there. I don't raise my children. So, where, 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 where am I going? Believe me. Where do I go? My home is paid for, right? Where the Lord Small supposed to go at?
Thank you, Ms. Small.
Right? This is my baby. This is my baby.
My father owned 64 homes before in Norfolk, Virginia.
You know, so this is it.
His name is Melvin Small. I, I own the home in Philadelphia. So, I had to move here to take care of my mother. It's horrible here.
And it's there on 38th Street.
Excuse me, Mom. Old Dominion University, they built the complete garage in front of her home. It's horrible. She has people coming at 1, 2, 3 o'clock, 4 o'clock in the morning. So, she has to move out her home. This is why I'm here. She has to leave. And I had to close my home up to come here to take care of her. So, it's, you know, it's, it's, it's a college, it's a college place now. It's not a multiple, single-home drilling anymore. It's completely a college facility where she can live at now. She has to move out. She's getting people 1 o'clock, 2 o'clock, 3 o'clock. Because her address is 1037, the college is 1037. So, she gets all the mail. She gets flowers, chocolate, clothing. She gets everything. Pizza Hut coming 1, 2 o'clock in the morning. So, I'm here to try to relocate her. So, this is what's going on. She's been in her property for 40 years. My father owned a house next door. My father actually bought the home, which he's finished paying for, the home where my mother's in, for his mother. So, you know, it's, it's, it's kind of horrible neighborhood for her.
Understood. Understood. Would you mind just giving us your name as well for the record?
I'm Kathy Small.
Okay. And your mailing address?
Right now, I'm with my mother, 1037 West 38th Street, Norfolk, Norfolk, Virginia. I have an address, 7337 Drexler Road in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, well, Mr. Gordon?
Yes, sir.
Like some more, more opportunity now in rebuttal. You have five minutes.
Again, they, from our perspective at this point, we'd just like to have this thing laid over for at least 30 days so that we've got an opportunity to meet with the developers, meet with the university, just, you know, so that we can absorb what, what will be built on that site and then come back and either be yea or nay at that point. But we think that it, that a project of this size and density on this site deserves a good look from the, from the neighbors and the neighborhoods that are affected by it.
Are you aware of the outreach that's happened with this project up until now?
I understand they had a civic league meeting at Lambert's Point back in November or something like that. But I've not heard of any meetings since then.
All right. Thank you. Comments, commissioners?
I'd just like to hear from the city. What is the outreach that the city's done so far in this program?
So, the applicant did have a community meeting at the time. There was no civic league. So, he did do a community meeting on over number nine. And that information is attached to your staff report.
I have a question. This coming project is part of the expansion of the university housing project as a whole. What, what does, what is the difference in this project versus what else is going on around? The purpose of, because there's a lot of, it's this university, there's a lot of university housing going on, a dorm. And this is going to be multifamily. So, what are we looking at essentially?
There, we don't have any other multifamily going up in this area that we are aware of right now. We do have a lot of, more in the Lambert's Point area. There is a lot of
Right.
Homes being built that are probably being used by students, but not multifamily per se.
I, I, I know the area, but, and if we've had a, we've gone over there with a field trip. I haven't been on that field trip. What I'm trying to understand is what is surrounding Ms. Small's? And is this a continued expansion of the kind of building and structure that the university has been doing in that area?
So, this isn't being done by the university. This is market housing, so it's separate.
Okay.
And as they pointed out, there is apartments to the north that are being used by students. Again, not run by the university, but it is being used by students. And right now, this property is industrial, as is the property to the, to the south of it as well. So, really, we're, we're converting what is industrial now into residential.
Okay. So, because there are a couple of kinds of things that are going on. This is, makes you felt, thanks.
In the list of notifications that we have in our packet, that was sent out in November, that included Ms. Small and the NEXT on 39th. This, the list that Mr. Flanagan sent out. Packet page 40.
Right. As well as the ODU.
Yes.
Foundation.
Well, Mr. Chair, I just, I'd like to make a quick statement if I can. You know, I'm going to vote to let this proceed without a continuance. Since everyone was notified, it does seem that Mr. Flanagan does have a little bit of work to do over the next month before it gets to city council. So, I hope you use that time. If this passes, our, our, our planning commission, I hope you use that time to get, get with the neighbors and work out some of these little issues before it gets to city council, because you still do have a month there to go.
Any other comments from commissioners? Any questions? Right for...
Susan, are you going to read the vote?
Yep.
This particular vote?
The motion is to recommend approval of the street closure of a portion of Schumadin from 37th to 38th Street.
Votes have been casted. Any changes?
Okay. Chair, Mr. Chairman, by a six to zero vote, the commission has voted to recommend approval of the request.
Thank you. We'll make that recommendation to council. Next item?
The next item on your agenda is another request. The second part of this application is a request by James Flanagan for a change of zoning on, from IL industrial light to MFAC, multi-family apartment complex at 1045, 1063, 1065, and south side of 38th Street. The purpose of this request is to allow the development of a multifamily apartment community with 150 units. Good afternoon again. So, again, this is kind of in conjunction with the street closure that you just heard. Again, the property is located between 37th, 38th Street, just east of Hampton Boulevard. It is the site of the old Heise Ice Cream Building, if that helps you place it. I know you've all been out in the field, but just as a reminder. And it is currently being used for offices, automobile repair, and a trucking terminal. The applicant is proposing a 150-unit apartment complex. As I mentioned, the site is currently zoned industrial, light industrial. So, to accommodate the construction of the apartment buildings, we did the street closure. Couple of things are required. A rezoning to MFAC, multi-family apartment complex, as well as a conditional use permit to allow more than 24 units, as we do in our multifamily districts. When there are over 24 units, we also require the conditional use permit. Because the applicant is requesting a request of the street closure, approval of the design review was required through the architectural review board and the planning commission. The ARB did review these plans and approve them at their January 8th meeting. This is a copy of the, the first floor, but, and we'll see in the elevations that I have later, to give you a description of what the project is. It's a four-story building. It is residential on the outside wrapped by, so it's a parking garage, excuse me, wrapped by residential. And the residents will park on the same floor their units are. So, if you're on the third floor, you pull into the garage and you drive up to the third floor. They are proposing two elevators. They are proposing handicap accessible units on the first floor. They're designated. There will be a fitness facility, a meeting room on the first floor, as well as a bike room. So, if you've got bikes, you can keep them in that indoor space. They will also have a bike rack located near the front door on 38th Street. And as I mentioned, they will have designated handicap spaces on the, the first floor. Two elevators, and those are essentially fairly close to those handicap accessible units.
Do we have this diagram in our agenda packet? Load specific location for elevators?
Yeah, that was the, right there. So, if you, I hate to walk away from here, but bike room, that's the bike rack, these are the elevators, and all of the rooms with the A are the handicap accessible units. This is a colored rendering. You see the amenities a little more clear. The brownish area is the amenities, and then the little portion off of that is the bike room. You've got a pool, and then the units. And then the next two are the elevations that were reviewed and approved through the ARB. So, staff is recommending that this application be approved. Again, this is something, you're taking an industrial piece of land, you're putting it into multifamily. It will actually act as a good buffer between what was there before the industrial Hampton Boulevard, which is fairly a busy street, back into the more single-family residential located to the east of this site. So, for those reasons, staff is recommending that the application be approved. And as we do, the conditions tie it to the site plan. And we also indicate that a final certificate of occupancy shall not be issued until the following amenities have been completed. Two elevators, a pool, a ground floor fitness room, and then sidewalks to be added along both 37th and 38th Street. And then one, I think that came up at the meeting that they had with the community. The hours of operation for construction of the project shall only take place between the hours of 7 o'clock AM until 5 o'clock PM. So, with those conditions, staff is recommending that the rezoning be approved.
Okay. Thanks, Susan.
Excuse me, I do have a question. Susan, are these the same diagrams that the architectural review board used to approve?
Yes.
Okay. Can you point out to me where the stairwells and the elevators are? I saw, you pointed to some areas that said elevator, but I didn't really see them marked or anything. So...
I don't know if I can point out where this, it's probably better off, go back to the...
Who?
Nope. So, again, I believe, yeah, you probably better address this. It isn't so clear on here. I believe the stairwell's here, because there's an entrance here. I don't believe there's a stairwell over here, but again, over here, there's a stairwell that goes out that way. And then again, the elevators are right there.
I'm having a little difficulty understanding how the architectural review board was able to approve this without us knowing exactly where the stairwells are. You mentioned that the two As are handicap, is that, 1A and 2A are handicap accessible?
All of the As. All of the apartments with As are handicap accessible.
And this is all the first floor?
Correct.
But there's parking on all floors, but we don't have a plan that shows all floors?
Correct. No, I don't in my PowerPoint.
And we don't in our, in our packets?
They may have, they may have looked at that, at the ARB, but it wasn't part of this application.
The commissioners don't currently have them in their package.
I don't think so, no.
Okay. And exactly how many parking spaces are there per, per unit?
I think the requirement is 1.6 in the zoning ordinance, and they do comply with that.
If I can interject, we actually have over that.
They meet the requirement, but so they do have more, though.
My reasoning for asking that question is that my packet is saying that there's one space per bedroom. So, that's leading me to believe that each unit has one bedroom. Is that correct?
It's a mix of ones and twos. But rather than provide parking space by unit, we're actually providing it by bedrooms. We're, we're exceeding that requirement.
Right. So, in the staff report, again, our, our requirement is 1.6. So, we require them to have 100 and, or, excuse me, 236 parking spaces. And they actually are providing 239. So, they do comply with zoning and they may have, and they have a little more, actually.
I think it's 239, but there's actually more than that.
My, my concern is accessibility. And without having a clear rendering of where stairwells are located and where...
Maybe we could, maybe if the applicant could come up and...
Sure. That was provided earlier, but I should have said, these are the two elevators right here, and that is a stairwell, and that is a stairwell as well.
Can we go back to the rendering?
So, your stairwell is probably right here, and then would be kitty corner. So, I think it would be right in there. It would be on your two kitty corners.
And the, and the elevators, as he asked, they should be in the tallest towers, blocks. Where, can you point out where that is on these renderings?
The elevators are interior to the building, so I don't think you would see them in, in the actual elevation. But I can, I can point them out again on the floor plan.
Because your parking is interior, correct?
So, the parking is interior, and the building wraps the parking
Right.
Completely. So, the only areas that you actually see parking deck is at the two entrances, both on 37th and on 38th Street.
So, you have both stairwells located on the front portion of the building on 38th or one on 37th and one on 38th?
One on 37th, one on 38th.
And both elevators are located in one central location
Correct.
On the front on 38th?
They're, can you go back to the, to the plan? So, they're located, I would say, kind of between 37th and 38th, but near the entrance of 37th, 38th Street.
What do you mean between 37th and 38th?
These are your two elevators right here. And so, 38th Street, the... These are your two elevators right here, and so 38th Street, they're actually interior to the building portion.
So, so an individual that occupies 2A as a handicap unit would come from 38th Street to the rear of 37th to access their unit?
The majority of the As are accessed actually from, from the street, from the sidewalk.
And that's really my problem, is that without a, you know, diagram that I can, you know, read and put my hands on, it's, I can't see where they're located. We've inquired about these elevators from day one, and we kind of keep getting pointed to around in this area or that area. I'm wondering if we have a, if we have a diagram that shows us exactly where stairwells will be ingress egress, and also elevators, and how they are positioned with accessibility, handicap accessibility.
Well, you have an interior corridor completely. Along, and you, the elevators are, there is a demarcation for the elevators and the stairs are demarcated here as well.
Okay. So again, my question, the, an individual that's located to the rear of the building near 37th, at 1A and 2A, would be handicap, and they're coming from the front of the building near the elevators at?
Well, this would be on the first floor.
Right.
And so they would enter through a handicap accessible entrance here.
So there is an entrance there?
Yes, it's shown right there.
I can't, I'm sorry. I don't have.
It's not in our, it's not in our.
It's not in our packet, I've already said that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If I may, along Mr. Houchens.
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 Sorry.
So sorry. So sorry. What I, what he's getting at, because I'm asking, I'm thinking the same question, you're, what you're intimating is that people can access elevators from both the street as a pedestrian and from the interior as, by car. They can come into, to the complex by car, and they can come into the complex by foot from the street. So if they are, how is it accessible to people who need a handicap accessibility?
So it is accessible both from the garage and from street entrances, or I should say all sidewalk entrances. You have, you have this access as well, right here, which leads you down into.
Are there ramps there for somebody in a wheelchair to make it into that building?
Yes, they will be ADA compliant.
Right. Well, it's not just that, but we're under the presumption that someone that's handicapped is only going to utilize the first floor. But I may go to visit a neighbor on the fourth floor, and I've got to leave from the rear of, closer to 37th, and come back to the front near, near the elevators, go back up, and then come back around again. And, you know, that, again, that's been personally my question from day one, was whether or not there'd be elevators on either end of the building. And to this point, I haven't had a clear document to show where that might be. But, you know, nevertheless, the stairwells are in this corner, and so they would lead up as well?
They do.
I don't have any other questions.
Here on this matter, for some questions, George Malamos.
Next one, that's not this one, for hearing three.
Are we on item three?
Did I number it wrong?
Yeah, we're.
What's, what's the name of the item you're?
Item number three? That was 2A, not three.
Yeah, EDC. Number three is EDC Ventures.
Anybody else who signed up for item two wish to speak? Okay, any other questions, commissioners?
It's from staff about Mr. Houchens' request. Is it, could staff have an input on this issue of, of the ADA compliance and our ability to see it clearly?
I mean, they, this is a new building, so they will have to meet all building code. So if it requires it to be ADA compliant, it will be ADA compliant.
Okay. Ready for a question, then?
The motion is to approve the rezoning, subject to the conditions proffered in the staff report.
Well, there's no proffers, this one, I don't believe.
Votes have been cast, any changes?
Mr. Chair, by a vote of six to zero, the Planning Commission has voted to recommend approval of the request.
Thank you. We'll make that recommendation to council. Next item, this is a, for clarification, this is Agenda, regular Agenda item four. Am I correct?
Right.
No further questions?
So this is the final portion of the last two items. It is a request by James Flanagan for a conditional use permit to allow more than 24 units at 1045, 1063, 1065, and the south side of 38th Street. The purpose of this request is to allow the development of a multi-family apartment community with 150 dwelling units. Okay, again, this is the same application we had, and as I mentioned before, in the multi-family AC District Apartment Complex district, anytime you want to do more than 24 units, you're required to get a conditional use permit. So this is following up on that requirement. They are proposing 150 units, so they do need the conditional use permit to allow them to do more than 24. Same application we just discussed.
Thank you.
And staff is recommending approval.
Any questions, commissioners?
I do have a question. I have some concern with the documents that we're using to approve this 150-unit development, and I'd like to know if it's within our purview to tie a more precise drawing, a more precise rendering of the floor plan and where ingress egress is located, accessibility to elevators and whatnot, other than what we currently have in our packets.
Staff, is that something that we can, we can tie to? I mean, I think that there are some documents that we've seen that we don't have access to in our, aren't in our agenda packet. Can we get a more clear rendering of the questions that we've had, and at least tie that to the, to this item going forward?
So I went down to try to find the file, and I do have the file, and it really is no more clear than, than what Susan has put into the PowerPoint. And also, Susan and I were just talking, just want to remind everybody that there was a conversation when this came from ARB, led by Mr. Houchens, that the elevators ought to be catty-cornered across the garage as opposed to the side-by-side approach that's here. So we do not have, I don't believe, things that will answer the question. I'm sure that we can get them, but we don't have them today.
I think it'd be helpful to have those and make council aware that we're, you know, that our votes are contingent on having that information available and available to, you know, all folks who've signed up here today.
Counsel, I don't know if this is a question you can answer, but again, we've got concern from the community that it doesn't feel like they've had, you know, ample time to look at this thing. I'd hate to have to continue this to, to, you know, a longer date, but is there something that we can tie our vote to, you know, that would be more precise than what we've seen today that is part of this package?
I don't know of a mechanism by which the, by which the commission could condition the application, the completeness of the application as it goes to council. I think the, I think the only options you have are to impose conditions that the, recommend that the city council impose conditions that the developer would have to follow during the execution of the project, or else hold off giving council your recommendation until you're comfortable that the documentation of what they propose to build matches what is consistent with your opinion of, of good planning practices. So I think you either have to send it forward with the best set of conditions that you can identify to make sure this is done correctly, or not send it forward. But, and offline, of course, staff can work to improve the quality of the information that's in the council packet, but I don't think you can control the completeness of the application through this, through this process.
So, Mr. Houchens, I mean, if there are specific concerns that you would like to see addressed, and if we can verbalize those and make those part of the, the conditions in the application, we can, I'm sure your fellow commissioners would be happy to.
It sounds like if you had the catty-corner elevator, is that, is that the main concern of yours, or is it more than that?
The main concern is accessibility, and I don't think it's fair to anyone to put forth a recommendation without clearly being able to say precisely where some of these things that we're hoping is where they are, are actually going to be. So, you know, again, I think it's a good project, I think it has the opportunity to be something great for residents in the community, but I don't think we have enough here to make a recommendation. And, you know, if anyone has anything that they'd like to chime in, then.
I think Mr. Houchens is bringing up a very important point. I think we, I think we should think about the issue, and maybe even discuss it, if ADH, compliance can be perfunctory without necessarily, design-wise, providing a building that truly allows people to live in it comfortably. I think that's the issue, really. Having, having had this discussion with people who do this kind of thing and talk about this kind of thing, because there still is a long way to go for people in the community who deal with accessibility. There still is a way to go about making buildings truly usable for people who need assistance in the building. So having clarity on that issue, as Mr. Houchens suggests, would be a way of making sure that it's not just perfunctorily ADA compliant, but that it actually does work in the way that it is intended to work by being compliant. Is that what you're getting at? I mean, that's what I see.
I would hope that we're all there, but it's been our practice that we weren't shooting for just the minimal. But I don't think if there's, if there's any, no suggestions that we could, you know, that we can put forth from this body, then, you know, I'm prepared to make a motion that we continue this to a further date.
What if we, if we make our recommend, or our thoughts, our concerns, our recommendations known to council at this time, it's known to the applicant, it's known to the other parties, allow everybody to work on a solution over the next month, and, you know, make it, at least make our thoughts known to council, and then if we haven't reached an area that meets what you're describing, Mr. Houchens, then I think council could also choose to continue it, understanding that council can continue this item if we're not, if we're not where we believe. I know that's not doing our full job and giving a complete recommendation to city council, but, you know, we at least have a chance of not putting this project offline now. It may still get pushed off of council if we can't come to an agreement, but that may be a fair compromise. I would agree, we did not get the information, I don't believe, that, you know, in full, that maybe we should have upfront. I don't know that I want to penalize the applicant or the process over that.
Well, and again, I don't, I don't feel it's a penalty. We made it clear from day one that one, at least I did, that we wanted it would be much more accessible if there were elevators catty-cornered in the building, and we were told that that's where elevators would be. At this point, we don't have a clear document that shows us, shows us exactly where anything will be. And so, again, I've asked staff, council, if there's, you know, if our recommendation is to have, to hold any weight for council, then there's got to be some rendering that shows what we're recommending. And what I'm being told is that we don't have one. So, again, my motion would be that this, this would be continued until we've, we've got sufficient renderings to show what we're recommending.
Mr. Flanagan is the applicant, do you have anything to add on the request to consider these elevators? Is this something that, from a design standpoint, you think can be accommodated?
We would love to proceed today and then work with staff to come up with a, you know, mutually agreeable location for the elevators. We're not looking to, to really delay the project.
I would like, it's not just the location of the elevators, but it's how one can access the, how it's situated within the building, from that point, how do you get from point A, point B, point C, in terms of the, making the building viable for people who need that? One can do a ramp and get somebody into the building and go up an elevator, but how is the, what, what happens flow-wise? I, I think this is an important issue, not to penalize you or anyone else, but as a, we've got to think about these issues, because this is an important issue, not just for this building, not just for the city, but it really is nationwide, about how people with disabilities are able to live in the buildings that we built. And to that point, I think, I think Mr. Houchens has raised an important issue. So I would, my, I would feel that, put, that, that coming back with something so that it doesn't get lost in the process. I would ask, is it, is it more viable in our process to do the compromise, or to have people come back to make sure that the issue is being properly dealt with?
So, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, having heard what you, you all are talking about, I would, I would agree with Mr. Houchens. A continuance at this point is, is the better solution. It's very uncomfortable to put staff in the position of trying to divine what it is that you all really are looking for and you want, and to say that, you know, you're going to pass it on, you're going to let staff figure it out. I'm not sure that I can, not sure that we've done that Vulcan mind meld between us so that I know exactly what it is that will, that you all are concerned about. I mean, I know it in general, but the specifics. So at this point, Mr. Chairman, I think I would recommend that you all go ahead and accept Mr. Houchens' motion for a continuance and vote on that.
All right. We have a motion to continue this item. Any discussion on that?
I'll second the motion. And to be clear for the record, the following vote is just, a yes would be to continue the item to the next public hearing in March, is that correct, Ms. Pollak?
Yes, to March 28th, yes.
I gotta say bravo to her, she's got it right on the screen, too. Well, I'll make sure the public knows.
Does it pass any changes?
Does it cast any changes?
Okay, Mr. Chair, the motion is by a vote of five to one to approve the continuance to the March 28th Planning Commission agenda.
We'll move that to the March agenda. Do you need to outline the vote?
By, oh, shoot.
I can outline that.
The vote was five to one.
Five to one, I didn't see who.
With Mr. Murphy being the one.
Okay, all right. Next item.
The next item on your agenda is EDC Ventures for a change of zoning from CN Neighborhood Commercial to MFNS, multi-family neighborhood scale at 8506 Chesapeake Boulevard. The purpose of this request is to allow for residential development. Okay, this is a request by EDC Ventures. The site is located on the northeast corner of Fisherman's Road and Chesapeake Boulevard. This area is developed with a mix of commercial, single-family, multifamily, and institutional uses. The other street that comes in is Sunset, so it's a fairly complicated intersection. The applicant is proposing to develop the site with townhouses. So, to accommodate this request, the applicant is proposing to rezone the property to MFNS, which is multifamily neighborhood scale. Under the current zoning, which is CN, multifamily and mixed-use buildings with at least 50% ground floor commercial would be permitted. Under the proposed zoning, the MFNS, that would allow a few additional uses. It would allow not only the multifamily, the multi, excuse me, the mixed use with 50% ground floor commercial, but it would also allow single-family townhouses on lots at least 20 feet in width, and two-family development. However, as a result of actions taken by the General Assembly and reflected in our zoning ordinance, the applicant is not allowed to make a proffer. So normally, on a rezoning, it would be a conditional zoning, and the applicant would proffer uses as well as a site plan. The applicant knows what he wants to do. As I mentioned, it's townhouses, however, because of the actions taken by the General Assembly, and we had to mimic that in our zoning ordinance, there is no site plan to reflect what the applicant is proposing as part of this application. So it would indeed be a straightforward multifamily neighborhood scale rezoning. Our recommendation, as I mentioned, the area is developed with a wide range of uses, including religious institutions, commercial uses, apartments, and single-family homes. Again, the applicant cannot proffer a site plan or the uses. But again, this area, the proposed unconditional zoning of the site could allow single-family development similar to what is located on the west side of Chesapeake Boulevard, or a form of multifamily townhouses, again, similar to what's located to the north. A mixed-use development with commercial on the first floor could be created. Again, that would be permitted under the current zoning. So even though we cannot accept proffers, staff feels that the use of the site with the zoning that is being requested is acceptable and would be appropriate at this location. So for those reasons, staff is recommending that this rezoning be approved. Any questions?
Thank you.
Community support, Civic League support?
Yes, they do have, I've gotten several emails from the Civic League indicating support.
Hi, Ms. Mallos, now, if you'd like to have a shot at this item, too, you're welcome.
Good afternoon, thanks for your time. My name is George Malamos. I'm representing Malamco Two Limited Liability Company, which owns the real estate, the two lots just north of the site right there. And first, I want to say I love progress. I love new construction in Ocean View. I live there and excited every time something's going on. I'm kinda surprised to be here, because last week, when I met with Susan, I was under the understanding that this would not be recommended. It was incompatible due to the fact that the bank lot that's behind there was not being included and being left commercial. So, that was just my understanding. Now, I'm not a planning person, I don't know how the process works. I also sit here and I see plans and floor plans and site plans and elevation, so I'm kinda confused why some projects have that and other ones, we can't see what their plan is. But I'll plead ignorance that I don't understand the process, but it would be nice to know what's going to happen with the property. So I'm not, you know, first, not necessarily against it, but what I do want to say is that, you know, it's, it's, we don't have a lot of these pockets of commercial, neighborhood commercial areas in Norfolk. There's a lot of tenants we have and other tenants in the area. It's not a very high, high-income area, and they utilize public transportation a lot, and they have to walk to stores. The closest Walmart is all the way down at Southern Shopping Center. I know people walk there. There used to be a below here a long time ago, maybe you know, if you're familiar with the neighborhood. So I think that we have to be careful to give up properties that have a commercial potential. It would really be nice, I've talked to tenants there, to have a neighborhood grocery store in the area or some other business use. I'm not sure, in this case, if residential is allowed under the current zoning, why does it need to change? So my understanding is residential is allowed under the current zoning as it is. So I would say, could there be a solution with the current zoning that utilizes both business and residential, and not give up such a big piece of real estate here? And you also have to look at the whole area. I don't know who all the property owners are in the whole corner there, but if we start losing, you know, the capability to do this, then do we really need more apartments there, which I guess would be permitted if you approved the zoning? So, you know, I'm not against progress, but at the same time, I don't see a plan here. We don't know what they're gonna do. I'm here and you can't lock them in. I understood that the planning commission was originally against this, and I see something about future land use in here that I wasn't told about, and I don't know what that is. So I'm kinda concerned for our own property, how we're seeing a plan materialize that says something about future use development. So, I would just ask the commission, consider this. We don't have a lot of these areas in Norfolk, and I think we gotta make the most of it. And don't forget that everybody doesn't have a car or Uber everywhere, they just can't afford that. And so neighborhood, community, businesses, grocery stores, eateries are very important. We just don't have that many in Norfolk. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mallos. George, or do you have any comments on on that, more from a staff standpoint?
No, again, unfortunately, the other rezonings we saw, we did have a way to tie it to a site plan or a floor plan, but unfortunately, when it's purely a conditional, or, excuse me, a residential rezoning, we've had our hands tied.
Can you, Mr. Mallos' comment was, was a good one, in that it currently can have residential currently, but we're changing it to the new zoning, and what's the reasoning behind changing to the new zoning from what it is today?
Right, so again, the applicant would like to do townhouses, and townhouses is not one of the uses that is allowed under the current zoning. We can't tie it to that site plan, but that is what he would like to do.
The comment about how the site is going to impact the neighborhood, I think, is one that really needs to be carefully considered because of what people need, and that their circumstances should not preclude them from being able to have in the neighborhood, the kind of neighborhood composition that allows people to shop and walk and go to the services that they need. It's something to be considered.
You did say the Civic Leagues did, that there was community support for the project.
Correct, they did meet with the Civic League, and we do have a lot of support from the Civic League.
And I will say this, I live, I live out in Ocean View, and I share Mr. Mallos' thoughts that we need commercial out there badly. I hate it, I have to drive to Ward's Corner to the grocery store right now. With that said, the market's just not there for commercial. If this, this lot's been empty for at least five, six, seven years right now, and I know the community's frustrated with it being empty the way it's been. The community supports residential going in here, and obviously, potentially townhouse residential going in here, so. And it's tough as it may for me to say I'd like to see a commercial go in there and keep it available for commercial, the property owner has some rights to it, instead of probably just sitting there for five, seven, eight, nine years, waiting for a commercial to come that I'm just not sure if it's ever gonna come in that, in that area right now. It's just, and I see it all over Ocean View, I'm dying for a whole lot of things. Dry cleaners, we don't have. I can go down a list of, you know, we don't have, but anyone else. However, in this circumstance, I think the community has spoken, and they're comfortable with residential going in here, and I'm gonna support that.
Any other comments, commissioners?
I just have one other comment. I think, obviously, you raised some very valid points as well, the walkability and the potential for what this commercial location could bear. My question is, I think, is to staff. Has the community had a chance to weigh in since they took the the bank lot out of the portion, so they do know that they'll be?
The applicant did follow up with the community after that, and that's why I said we had received several emails. We had a follow-up one indicating that they still supported the request.
Very good, thank you.
I do want to answer Mr. Mallos' one question. You're seeing different roles, different, whereas aggravated as you are in some levels, that we can't see what's gonna go here. That's just state law. For residential properties, we cannot ask any questions or require them to do anything, unfortunately. I would love to be able to see a rendering and say, yeah, let's approve that. I even asked a question of staff. There are certain circumstances that we can do that, and I tried to push that to make it a planned development, unfortunately, it's a too small of an area to go do that, so. That's another area I wish, I wish we could, you know, push the button and say, no, we wanna see it and get a feel for what it is, but unfortunately, in this circumstance, we can't do that either, so.
I do have some follow-up questions, if I could. So, first question I have is, why was I told the city, the planning commission wasn't gonna support this, that it was incompatible?
I did not say that, sir.
Okay. I got the impression that that was gonna be, that leaving this lot back here with just the bank, which is commercial in this pocket, let's say that changes to residential, that this is problematic. So I don't know how the planning commission sees having this piece of commercials that can back in here into that neighborhood. Is that consistent with the plan if this is residential and you got a commercial spot here? For the same reason tomorrow, if I wanna take our property and rezone it commercial after townhouses or possibly apartments are built here, can I change that to commercial? Since we got this, this little guy back there? Would that be compatible?
Sir, we're interpreting all of these as rhetorical questions, because we do not, we do not engage in debate with, with the members.
No, no, I'm not debating. I guess, from a personal standpoint, we have commercial here. We invested in this area when it was commercial, and so the thought would be that it, one day, be nice if a commercial expanded, this could. So I guess I'll just point out to the planning commission, if this goes residential, then we kinda lose the opportunity to have future expanded commercial development, possibly. Don't know what the planning commission would do, but obviously, it becomes a concern to try to expand in that direction. So, that, that's really all my point, and I don't think the demographics of whether we support, you know, what kind of businesses supported there should really play a function. I understand we're, we don't have a high-income property there, so we're, we're limited as well with the investment in the property. So just wanted to point out, be nice to reserve those areas that we still have, because once they're gone, I don't think you can get them back. So, thank you for your time.
Appreciate your comments. Any other comments, commissioners?
The motion is to recommend approval of the rezoning.
Votes are casting changes?
Okay, Mr. Chair, by a vote of five to one, the commission has voted to recommend approval of the request. Mr. Houchens has voted no on the request.
Thank you, we'll make that recommendation to council. Next item.
Okay, the next item is a request by Tidewater Communications LLC for a conditional use permit to construct a communication tower, commercial, at 600 East Indian River Road. The purpose of this request is to allow the replacement of a 545-foot-tall AM/FM radio tower.
Hello, commissioners. This proposal comes from Tidewater Communications for a conditional use permit to replace an existing 545-foot-tall radio communications tower located at 600 East Indian River Road. Site is located on the north side of East Indian River Road, between Luckstone and the Riverside Magnolia Cemetery. The property is Zoned IG for Industrial General, which allows for communication towers with a conditional use permit. The original tower was constructed in 1973, and it will be replaced with a tower of similar design and height. The property is surrounded by mostly industrial uses with open space to the east and single-family zoning districts to the south. This is an aerial of the site. The applicant received approval from the wetland board in November for a guy wire that's anchored in the wetland on the north end of the site, and they are going through the site plan review process to ensure compliance with all standards in the zoning ordinance. The applicant is also applying for a 40-year easement with the city for a guy wire that's anchored on cemetery property, and that will go before city council on March 5th. If all approvals are received from the city, the construction process is expected to take four to six months. And lastly, we did receive an email of support from this project from the Camp Estella Civic League back in November. Staff recommends approval of this conditional use permit.
Any questions?
There are guide wires currently with the existing tower?
Yes, there's three guy wires, and the new ones will shrink the footprint of those guy wires, not by a lot, but by a few feet.
Thank you.
Thank you. Here to speak on this item in favor, the applicant, Christine Conrad.
I'm the agent on behalf of the applicant, so I'm happy to answer any questions if you have.
Okay, stand by. Mr. Eric Sherwood.
Next one.
Apologize, there's, our agenda doesn't line up with the new electronic agenda, just one of the small. Yeah, we're on it at four. All right, I don't have any other folks. Any comments? Commissioners? Make the vote.
You're the only ones.
I know.
Okay, the motion is to recommend approval of the conditional use permit, subject to conditions contained in the staff report.
Votes are casting changes?
Okay, Mr. Chair, by a vote of six to zero, the commission has voted to recommend approval of the request.
Thank you, make that recommendation to council. All right, now on to item five.
Okay, this is a request by the Colonial Heights Church of Christ for the following conditional use permits at 831 Mayfield Avenue and 833 Marvin Avenue, A for a religious institution and B for a daycare center child.
So this request is coming from the Colonial Heights Church of Christ to allow a religious institution to operate a daycare center, 831 Mayfield and 833 Marvin Avenue. Site's located in the Colonial Heights neighborhood, in the area between Chesapeake Boulevard and Tidewater Drive. Property is Zoned SF10, which allows for religious institutions and daycare centers with a conditional use permit. The use as a church was grandfathered on the site, but because they're proposing to have a second use on the property, they're required to get a CUP for both of these uses. Currently, the property is split into six separate parcels, so the applicant will be required to vacate all interior lot lines as part of this conditional use permit. This is a rendering of the site plan, where you can see the location of the proposed daycare play area and the planting strip that will delineate between the parking lot and the public right-of-way. The applicant met with the city's landscape architect to come up with a landscaping plan, which has been included in your staff reports. The applicant will be given six months to complete the landscaping plan, as well as a recommended drive-apin improvements and signage requirements for the parking lot. Here are photos of the proposed play area, which will be 12 feet by 58 feet. Per the zoning ordinance, daycare centers are required to have outdoor play areas located to the side or the rear of the property. It's been located, in this case, on the side of the building, because the site does not technically have a rear yard. And because it abuts a residential dwelling, the dwelling, the play area will be required to be completely enclosed by a six-foot solid fence with an exterior landscape buffer that is capable of reaching six feet in height at full maturity. In addition to the play area, the children will be taken on supervised walks throughout the neighborhood and the North Side Park Playground is right around a quarter-mile walk from the site. The applicant's proposing to have 30 children between the ages of two and a half and six years old. They'll have five to six staff members on site. They presented the Crossroads Civic League in November, which voted unanimously in support of this proposal. Staff does recommend approval of this conditional use permit. Do you guys have any questions?
Thank you. All right, here actually for this item, Mr. Sherwood.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Eric Sherwood, 8437 Benningfield Court, Norfolk, 23503. I'm here today to discuss the preschool and church that has existed in the, well, the churches exist in the Colonial Heights neighborhood for over 80 years, purchased back in the 1930s by citizens of this community. And we're here today unfortunately because of the conditional use permit process. In this public hearing, I would like to make it known that I do not believe we had a legal obligation to do this process as according to the City of Norfolk ordinance, churches are allowed to operate schools and daycare facilities as part of their religious uses. I'd like to make it known and encourage the city planning commission and the city department to be a little more considerate of the process, give people more options. We're here today with approval of the neighborhood, with approval of staff and things like that. But the unfortunate part is, is that the improvements that are being requested, we believe are unnecessary and create an undue financial burden on this project. We're attempting to add three classrooms to a church that's existed in harmony with its neighbors, without fences, without bushes, without issues with the parking lot for the last 80 years. I have several members of the community here today, including one direct neighbor that is affected by this, that will speak on half of the project as well. We believe that when we come across a project in the city of Norfolk, that there shouldn't be such high barriers to the zoning ordinance when things are so small. Our entire construction budget is going to be less than, around $5,000 for materials. The project's going to be built by all volunteers. No contractors are being hired. We're not changing a single thing to the exterior of the building. We'd like to paint it, but if we have to spend so much money on bushes and other things, then we're not going to be able to do improvements inside the building and do things for the community that we've been doing for such a long time. And so I would ask that the planning commission approve our application without the recommendations listed in line A of our planning packet. And in addition to that, A subsection C, the play area with a fence and landscape buffer, is something that's entirely new to me. I heard it in the, in the meeting at one o'clock, in my discussions with planning staff and things as well. And on my site plan, I only have a three-foot vinyl coated chain link fence. There simply isn't enough area for a fence and bushes. And if that is going to be part of the recommendation, we're not going to be able to meet that and that's going to be an issue. And so as we move forward in this process, I'd like to also say that the city planning staff has been accommodating and things as well. However, I believe that there's some inherent culture issues in the, in the way that this process works. And we want to be part of that solution. We've been part of the solution in Ocean View for a very long time. I'm employed and go to Ocean View Church and Ocean View Christian Academy a little further in the city. And we're partnering with Colonial Heights to do this, to be able to be lights in the community, to be places where people can come and be fed, where they can educate their children, and where we can exercise our religious rights that this country was founded upon. I've personally been a victim of religious persecution, real persecution, in a jail, well, not in a jail, in a police house in India for hours at a time. I've seen what it's like. And I believe we're bordering on this process on infringing our rights in the constitution and under the federal law passed in 2000 known as Ralupa, where we're not allowed to create undue burdens upon land use. Based on my interpretation of the general use of a church in the city's zoning ordinance, we don't believe that we were, we should have been in this process to begin with. It's created delay upon delay. I can't get a building permit because of this process. And the church is frankly in danger of shutting down if we delay this process any further. So while I do not believe that we should be in this process, I too realize that it is what it is. And we have to do what you suggest and what city council will suggest as well. So I urge you to please pass this without some, without these recommendations of planning staff. Allow this project to go through without, without these unnecessary improvements. And I'll be making the same argument to city council as well when we get there and ask them to do the same thing. Questions?
Questions? Thank you. Appreciate it. Also here in favor of the application, Matt Scott.
Good afternoon. My name is Matt Scott, 831 Mayfield Avenue, Norfolk. I'm the pastor of the church. And I've been with Colonial Heights Church for almost five years. Been in the area here a little over 23 years. I worked with the church in Hampton for 19 before coming here. And I just love the Colonial Heights Church of Christ. The people that I get to work with and the community that I get to work in, it's just such a blessing to me. One of the great things about this church, and I won't say the biggest reason, the biggest reason, of course, in ministry is you go where you believe God wants you to be. But one of the things that I saw in this church is a desire to impact their community. And you may notice, but there are churches dying all over the place, churches closing their doors. And my observation is that so many of those churches, it's simply because they've pulled within themselves. They've gotten so focused on little issues here and there with the church. Another problem for churches is that a lot of times expenses come up that are beyond what you could possibly budget for. In the last couple of years, we've put over $40,000 into our heating and air conditioning system. We had to make arrangements to do that, but that means the next time a big expense comes around, it's very difficult. The idea of the daycare is first and foremost to serve our community. Now, a lot of that is we want the community to know that we're here and that we care, that we make a difference. And so we've stepped out in that direction. There's also a hope that, that at the end of each month, there'll be a few dollars left over and that will help supplement or augment our offerings. But honestly, as long as we impact our community, the church is going to grow. It's going to do what it's supposed to do. You know, I appreciate what Eric had to say, but it's a difficult thing because you all have an important job. You know, there are certain things in the code, certain things that the state code puts down and the city of Norfolk expects. But if we can do this without undue delay or undue expenses beyond what's required, it will help us to be able to impact our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Here to speak for, Mr. Gary Greenwald.
Good afternoon to the commission. My name is Aaron Dinini. I live at 1518 Leeview Avenue up in Willoughby, 23503. And I'm here today to just kind of personalize this a little bit. I am the senior pastor at Ocean View Church. And back in 2016, well, let me back up, 15 years ago, came to the church, didn't know where my life was going. My life got turned around because of the place of worship where I, where I found Jesus and believed. And from there, I became the youth pastor for about eight years. Now I've been the senior pastor for six and a half years. And along with this church came this beautiful school that was not so beautiful not too long ago. But we've seen amazing growth and amazing impact in the community through being able to educate our students and take care of young children in preschool. And now we're all the way down to infant care at our location in Ocean View. And my kids have gone to Ocean View Christian Academy and preschool since they were in preschool and are currently in the academy. I have five kids, three of them currently in the school, two of them too young for it so far. And I just want to reiterate the need for quality education and quality daycare in our city. People are going to Virginia Beach to take their kids to daycare. Folks that I've talked to, people in the military that are coming in, live in Norfolk, want to go somewhere else outside of our city to take kids. And we are right there. Both these churches are right close to the bases, within proximity. And so there is a great need in our city. And so I'm here today to just reiterate what Mr. Sherwood has said and just ask you to vote accordingly to his requests. So, thank you.
James Norton.
Good afternoon. My name is James Norton. I live at 846 Marvin Avenue. I am the neighbor that they spoke about earlier. I've been their neighbor for 49 years, my whole life. The church is more than just a church facility. It's something for the community. Since I was a kid and on, I've seen a lot of pastors come, a lot of leaders of the church come. But they've always come back with quality people. There's always been quality people. They're not just the church next door and if you're not part of it, you don't know them. Because this, these people right here are the ones you want to help. Because everybody else that we've heard today, they're doing it for financial reasons, for their own pockets or their business. These people don't make any money out of this. This right here comes back to the church, back to the community, back to the kids that need this social interaction early in life so they don't go to school and act a fool. They also, you know, but they're on unlimited budget. They're an older church and they're reinventing themselves. And this daycare is where they want to start. They've got the backing of another church that's already done it and has been so, so successful. You said you lived in Ocean View. I'm sure you've got to know about them, the Ocean View Church off Grahamian Government down there. They're great people. These fences and borders and plants, it's not a blighted area. It's not a blighted area. They're all for upgrading, getting to the 2030, the beautification program that Norfolk has. They need time. Give them an opportunity to, to do what they do, get started. And then if they want to revisit, you know, these bushes and hedges, I'm sure they'll jump in. They're great people. And again, they're doing it for the best of the city. So I ask that you please, you know, help them out. These are the ones you want to help out. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Edward Wyatt.
Good afternoon. My name is Ed Wyatt. I live at 858 Marvin Avenue, three doors down from the church. I'm also an elder at the church. I've been there six years. I see the impact that we have on the community. We operate, not only are we doing, wanting to do a daycare, we have a food pantry, we have a clothes closet, we outreach to the community. We bring, we have what we call Harvest Fest. We bring four and 500 kids in on Halloween, keep them off the street. We have games, we have hot dogs. All of this stuff we do out of our pocket because we love our community. We want the best for our community. That's all we're trying to do. Every dollar that we have to spend doing something else takes away from what we can do and impact our community. Thank you.
Thanks, Wyatt. Mr. Livingston.
No, I don't want to speak.
Okay. Here also in favor but not wishing to speak is Vera Marie Livingston. And Earlene Chester, just here to support. Okay. And here undecided, Ms. Savannah.
I'm fine.
You're fine. Thanks so much. Questions, Commissioners, comments?
Hank said that the, they're required to have a play area. Is the size of the play area stipulated?
Nope.
The, there is no size requirement for the play area. It just has to, normally it's a four-foot fence, but because it is next to a residential dwelling, that's what triggered the six-foot solid fence.
Right. I see the need to separate, but a solid fence I think would make it feel like a tunnel.
Right.
Considering that fence would be half the width of the area.
I'd be comfortable saying that the fencing should be whatever minimum state requirements should be, would be a fair statement here.
All right, before we go, Mr. Chairman, if I might, and I don't know whether Mr. Malita or I should address this.
Same answer, whoever gives it, so you can.
Before we drive too far down that road, the requirement for the fence and the landscaping and the height of that fence is written straight into the zoning ordinance. It is not something that this commission or indeed city council can waive. It is an absolute zoning ordinance requirement, it's part of performance standards for child daycare facilities. I don't know if there is a size requirement that's established by social services. We don't establish one in the zoning ordinance. There may be some size requirements for outdoor play that is hardwired into the zoning ordinance or into the social service requirements.
But I'm not sure every daycare is required to have a social services approval.
Right.
Either. So.
So I don't.
So does the ordinance require a fence or does it require an eight-foot fence?
It requires a six-foot solid fence supplemented by landscaping on the outside to, that will grow to approximately six feet, at least six feet in height at maturity.
If there's residential.
If there's residential immediately adjacent, which in this case there is.
So then with the perimeter landscaping, would that push the fence three feet closer to the church?
Not to, not to my knowledge. The, so the six-foot, it just has to be six feet tall. The bare, there's not a.
It has to be bushes, right, outside of the fence?
Right. There are bushes, but they don't, there's not a width requirement for those, for those bushes surrounding the play area.
It doesn't even say it has to be on the property. So obviously it can't go on the neighbor's property without the neighbor's permission. But if the neighbor were to give permission for the landscaping to be installed on his or her property, that would not contradict the requirement of the ordinance.
Comments? Commissioners, other questions?
The only comment I would like to make is, you know, just for the sake of the commission and all interested parties, I think this is a great venture that the church is doing for the community and for the kids. And we really are consistent with the ordinance requirements for daycare centers. We get them, you know, they come to us, you know, frequent enough and most have the same concerns is that they'd like to do it as inexpensive as possible. But unfortunately, we have to follow what the ordinance says and what the regulation is state, it brings from the state down. So that's the only thing I would like to offer and.
Can I address other comments?
The problem with the landscaping is not that we oppose bushes or beautification or whatever. It's that because of the way that our lots are set up, for us to put in landscaping means taking out parking spaces. Now, back in the day, back in the 30s and 40s and 50s, when this was a neighborhood church, 80% to 90% of the people probably walked to church. The people who drove to church probably had a big woody station wagon and they probably piled five or six kids in the station wagon, plus the neighbor kids and whatever. They got some dogs and cats in there too. And they came and 40 or 50 parking spaces could accommodate a church of 200 to 300 people very easily. In our world today, it is not that way. My wife and I have three kids. They're all in their 30s right now. And when they were, our kids were teenagers, there were times that five of us would take four cars to church. Or four of us might take three cars to church. And we had other families, the church in Hampton at that time, that would do the same thing. And so for us to lose parking spaces for the sake of bushes when they've never been there, that doesn't make sense to us. Again, it's not about the lack of beautification. It's losing those parking spaces that makes an impact. That also suggests that if we lose parking spaces, as the church grows, more and more people would have to park on the streets. Now, I don't know about your neighbors, but our neighbors don't necessarily want us to have very many people parking on the streets. And so this is a way to create a solution before. on the streets. And so this is a way to create a solution before there's a problem by not making us take out the parking spaces. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Any further comments, commissioners, questions? Certainly, you know, Mr. Scott, Mr., I think we're done with, we've got all your comments for sure.
If I could allow, could I please comment on the playground a little bit more?
Do you have any additional information to add?
Yeah, I have information about state law and those things that you were asking about.
I didn't ask anything.
You don't have any questions?
I didn't ask anything.
Yeah, yeah, you know, I mean, I just want to, you know, let you know, there's certainly no lack of compassion and understanding from this commission. I don't want, I want you all to understand that. Our purview and the rules that come down from state level that, you know, our attorney and director, you know, guide us on, you know, limit us often some things that we would like to do differently in certain situations. But again, I just, I don't want you to think there's any lack of compassion or understanding about the needs there. And running these daycares now mean a lot, are a lot different than they were twenty, thirty years ago. There's a lot more regulations around them for you, and there's regulations around us to ensure that there's safety and conformity across all these daycares. And they're not all the same. And, you know, so I'll leave it with that. I think we have the information that we have here, you know, to move things forward.
The motion is to approve the conditional use permits subject to the conditions contained in the staff report.
Votes have been cast. Any changes?
Mr. Chair, by a vote of six to zero, the commission has voted to recommend approval of the request.
Thank you. We'll make that recommendation to.
Subject to the conditions contained in the staff report.
Correct. We'll make that recommendation to council. Good luck. Next item?
Okay, the next item is a request by River Beach Brewing Company for the following conditional use permits at 3800 and 3808 Colly Avenue and 737 Michigan Avenue, A, production of craft beverages, and B, live entertainment.
Good afternoon. This is a request from River Beach Brewing Company for two conditional use permits, one of which is to operate an establishment that, for the production of craft beverages and the accessory use of live entertainment. The site is located on the corner of Colly Avenue and Thirty-Eighth Street within the Highland Park neighborhood. And the site includes not only the building here at the corner, but the parking lot in the back along Michigan Avenue. The zoning on the property is CC, Community Commercial, which permits the uses with the two conditional use permits. And here you see the proposed, the operational proposal as far as the hours of operation for on and off premises alcohol consumption, which would be noon until ten PM seven days a week. And then the hours of live entertainment would start at five PM and end at ten PM seven days a week. Capacity is as you see here with a total of two-hundred-and-seventeen, and the entertainment options are on the slide as well. So as part of this project, there are a number of site improvements. One thing that staff turns to with applications in this area of the city is the Central Hampton Boulevard area plan. So you'll see along Colly Avenue, we do have landscape planting strip to sort of screen the parking from the right-of-way. And that's along Thirty-Eighth Street, Colly Avenue, and Michigan Avenue with new street trees and bushes as approved by Parks and Recreation. One other improvement is a closure of an existing driveway along Colly Avenue, closest to the intersection with Thirty-Eighth Street. That would be closed, and new sidewalk, curb gutter sidewalk and landscaping will be placed there instead. And then that would also create the opportunity for additional on-street parking along Colly Avenue. The, as you can see here, the parking remains on-site in this configuration, as you see. They will do a new dumpster padding closure as is required. They will also have to screen the adjacent residential districts. There is single-family residential right adjacent to the site, and as you can see, there's an existing fence there, opaque fence there along a portion of that perimeter, but not the entire perimeter. So they would build a new six-foot-high opaque fence along the eastern property line to buffer, to appropriately buffer the new, this use from the adjacent residential. And these are a couple of the elevations. We have four different elevations to show the four sides of the building. These two, the first one is at the front along Colly Avenue, where it shows the windows and the entrance. The one on the bottom is currently is on Thirty-Eighth Street. One of the improvements they're doing to the building is to un-brick the two of the windows along the Thirty-Eighth Street facade and to kind of activate that street a little bit more for pedestrians and just make it more inviting. It also ties in well with the Central Hampton Boulevard area plan, really calls, actually identifies this intersection as a neighborhood gateway area and one of the nodes for concentrations of retail in order to build prominence and neighborhood character through critical mass and to reinforce the presence of existing restaurants as a better-defined restaurant The final two elevations are the other side, the eastern side, as you see here on the top, and then the outdoor seating area in the back is shown in the bottom. Staff does recommend approval of the conditional use permit subject to the conditions in the staff report, which conclude all of the site improvements and the building improvements. And I will say also, the Colonial Place River View Civic League did send in a letter of support, as well as the Highland Park Civic League. And I did want to mention, we did receive one email of opposition from a nearby resident on Michigan Avenue who had some concerns with the music, some of the alcohol consumption effects that may have, and on, and also on the parking, potential impacts to the parking on the street there in the neighborhood, and the odor that could be produced by the production of craft beverages. But I believe the applicant is better equipped to answer some of those concerns, and I believe he may have some comments prepared to address that. And with that, I'll stand by for any questions.
Chris, here to speak, or the applicant is here. I'm sure if you'd like to speak. Marty?
SA.
SA?
Yeah.
Can you see?
I have no SA.
Available for questions? Mr. McDonald?
Yes, sir.
Available for questions? Did you want to address any of those concerns?
Yeah, I actually would like to.
Just give us your name and mailing address for the record. Thanks.
Justin McDonald, 1505 Taylor Farm Road, Virginia Beach. I just wanted to address that email that did come in. Some of the points she made, Ms. Montgomery, she said, increase of parked vehicles on our already crowded street, referring to Michigan Avenue, I believe, noise of music from nearby people after nine PM when some people are sleeping, potential for increase of drunk and disorderly patrons in our 700 Michigan Avenue block, potential for vandalism by drunk patrons, already have experienced it and don't want any more of that activity, offensive smell from the brewing process, have noticed a smell outside of O'Connor's Brewing, at least they are in a predominantly business area. Colly Avenue North is being populated with too many bars and breweries next to a neighborhood with many families and older generation. And it says, please decline the permit for yet another brewing company in close proximity to plenty of other drinking establishments. So I'm going to address those things one by one, if I may. So the first thing is increase of parked vehicles on our already crowded street. It's exactly why we selected a building with adequate parking. The lot is pretty large relative to the size of the building, and we've ensured the spaces meet the city's requirements. In addition, we're going to be installing bike racks, and we want to encourage the area to be walkable and bikable. The second point was noise from music and nearby people after nine PM when some people are sleeping. Like most breweries, we're not a late-night operation. We're not a bar. The latest their taproom will be open is ten PM, and live music will end prior to this time, and all entertainment will be kept indoors, nothing outside. Her third point is potential for increased drunk and disorderly patrons in our 700 Michigan Avenue block. While we cannot control the behavior of private citizens, we absolutely can discourage overconsumption and do by identifying and not serving intoxicated person, which any ABC licensee is required to do. This is also part of why we limit our hours. We're not going to be open until two AM. We're open until ten PM maximum. This mitigates a lot of those problems and kind of helps us avoid them starting to begin with in our operation. So again, it's important to note that we're not a bar. We're a manufacturer who invites patrons in to try the product that we make. The fourth one was potential for vandalism by drunk patrons, already have experienced it, and I don't want more of that activity. This is essentially the same point as her number three. It's our goal to operate a business that's friendly to our neighbors and works to mitigate these issues and prevent them before they happen. The fifth one is offensive smell from the brewing process, have noticed a smell outside of O'Connor's Brewing, at least they are in a predominantly business area. As far as offensive smell goes, this is pretty subjective. I think the brewing process smells like a bakery. Not everyone's going to agree with me, but again, that's kind of a subjective thing. Another thing to note is a lot of the beer that's going to be sold in Norfolk will be produced at our primary Virginia Beach location. The brewery that we're going to be installing in Norfolk would be a small pilot system. So we're going to do kind of more test batches, more small batch things. Some of that beer will be made in Virginia Beach and just transferred, which is legal under ABC law. The final and sixth one, Colly Avenue is being populated with too many bars and breweries next to a neighborhood with many families and older generation. We feel that the addition of a, another good responsible business to North Colly is a good thing. You know, providing jobs, increasing property values, generating tax revenue, adding to local culture. So we look forward to being good neighbors and stewards of North Colly. That's all I got.
Sounds good. Thank you.
I've got a quick question for you.
Sure.
Your hours of operation seven days a week are noon until ten PM?
They are, we said noon to ten, ten PM, just kind of putting in there the maximum that we would ever be open.
And I'm wondering why you didn't do the same thing for the hours of entertainment? You have that from five PM until ten PM?
We kind of just want to keep that as more limited thing. I don't want anybody to get the impression that we're a concert venue. That's going to be something that we primarily do kind of, you know, like a Friday or Saturday night thing. We probably would never have it during the day.
Okay, just, the other ones do. It just jumped out at me that if you're going to have a one-year anniversary party on a Saturday, you might want live entertainment before five o'clock.
That's a fair point. However, it's in there. So if we kicked off music, we kicking off at five.
That's what you want to stick to. You don't want.
I don't know. Is it too late to, okay, then we probably will try to work with staff to add that, because that's a great point, something that hadn't occurred to me.
Don't even have to work with staff.
This is it, man.
This is it.
Hours you want.
Okay. Well, I guess, I guess same as the hours that are on there, if that's going to be something we can approve. Again, that's not something that we're looking to do all the time, but again, to have that flexibility would be greatly beneficial.
We would agree.
So noon until ten is what we're saying?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you need a motion to make that?
We'll include that in the motion.
Thank you.
If we notice that everybody's heads are going north-south and nobody's going east-west, we don't need a motion.
We think it's important to keep you on the same playing field as the other businesses that do the same thing.
I appreciate that. I appreciate that.
In Norfolk. Don't have to come back through to go through the process again.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Here to ask questions perhaps, Mr. Endicott?
Joe Endicott, 728 Thirty-Eighth Street. So I am on the other side of the fence. I'm glad to have somebody coming in, number one. Actually, the thought of a brewery was a plus because of the hours being not till two AM. That's a good thing. There were just a couple of things that did have me concerned. One of them is the frequency and level of the live entertainment there. We do have a lot of school-age kids, you know, between my house and the brewery, there are elementary school-age kids trying to sleep directly behind our house. It's the same thing. I was glad to see and hear that it's going to be limited to inside, which that was one of our big concerns. So that did answer a question. But it does just say, avoid significant adverse noise. So I'm curious, is there an actual way of measuring what that is, or is it, I think it's loud and I don't? At what point would a concern be raised? I mean, how do we gauge that?
Hopefully neighbors would talk directly with the business owners if there were any concerns. Hopefully talk ahead of time about what expectations are, and most of the time those issues can be addressed within your community. You know, beyond that.
So that's correct, and there is a, Norfolk does have a noise ordinance that has decibel standards based on whether you're in a residential area or commercial area. And so there is a measurable way to determine whether or not the person creating the noise might be in violation of the criminal provisions of the code. But frankly, the complaints of neighbors and the desire to maintain peace and enjoyment among neighbors is probably a more significant measure of whether what's going on is acceptable or not, rather than the noise meter. So the noise meter is sort of the worst-case scenario. And I think the chairman's correct in that the, you would, you would need to approach the business to make them aware of what's appropriate for your street.
And don't get me wrong, I live on Thirty-Eighth. I understand noise. I mean, that's, it's not a thing. It's college kids. It's, you know, but it is, you know, a bit of the, how much over time. And we'll work with that, and I'm sure we'll be coming in over there. So, like I said.
If I can put you at ease a little bit, we deal with this a lot downtown. And if you call the police non-emergency number, they'll go and they'll talk to the business. And the businesses generally cooperate in turning down the music because they're in the business of making and selling beer, and they don't want to put that at risk.
Oh, sure. Yeah, and that's.
So you don't have to confront the business directly yourself.
I don't mind talking to them. I mean, it seems like a nice conversation.
Absolutely hers. I mean, I would hope somebody would just come talk to us first.
Yeah, yeah, we'll be there opening day, so we're going to be. Now, the other thing on, that just, it was just kind of a, a little bit off on the plat. It shows existing fencing that's there, and it shows, yeah. It looks like you guys are trying to put in a six-foot opaque here, which is nice there. This is not an existing eight-foot solid wood fence. Right now, it's a barbed-wire-topped chain link from the post office. I believe this fence on this side is wood to here because this neighbor installed it. Okay? So it comes to here. This part that wraps around is all just open chain link. Would that be part of your plan?
It's our understanding that we must make it all solid.
Okay.
And so that part has to be replaced.
Your answer.
Yep.
Right on. Do we need to have that included?
I would recommend that Susan McClear and the amended motion that all portions of the property abutting the residential parcels to the east be improved with an eight-foot solid fence wherever one does not already exist.
Appreciate it. Any other comments, questions?
I would like to say that I had wondered what was going to happen with that building. And I'd like to commend the brewery that's making the proposal for what you're doing with the building, and especially in terms of the finestration, because it's not a bad little building. And what you're doing, I think, is going to bring it back to looking good on the street.
Okay, so the motion is to approve the conditional use permit subject to the conditions contained in the staff report with the following changes, that the hours of oper, the hours of operation for the entertainment be changed to twelve o'clock noon until ten o'clock PM seven days a week, and all portions of the property abutting residential to the east be improved with a solid eight-foot fence.
Votes been cast. Any changes?
Okay, Mr. Chair, by a six to zero vote, the commission has voted to recommend approval of the request.
Thank you. Thank you. Make that recommendation to council. Good luck.
Okay, the next item, the Bold Mariner Brewing Company for the following conditional use permits at 1901 East Ocean View Avenue and 9638 Capeview Avenue. A, production of craft beverages, and B, live entertainment.
Good afternoon. This is a request from Bold Mariner Brewing Company for two conditional use permits, the production of craft beverages and the live entertainment accessory use. And the site is located at the corner of East Ocean View and Capeview Avenue within the Cottage Line neighborhood. And the existing, the current building was formerly used as a bank. Zoning on the property is CC, again, a community commercial, allowing these uses with conditional use permits. And the site was previously owned by the city, and so therefore went through the city's design review process, obtaining approval from the Architectural Review Board and the Planning Commission for the two things that you'll see on the site plan later, but essentially enclosure of the rear teller, bank teller lane for, to enclose where they would plan to put, where they would put their brewing operations, and then the exterior stairway on the eastern side of the building. Here you'll see their hours of operation, capacity, and entertainment options. As is typical of breweries, their hours are noon to 11:00 PM seven days a week, and then their entertainment would end one hour before that, seven days a week at 10:00 PM. With the building itself is 300 total capacity, and the outdoor seating is quite substantial, so that's why you see the 100 seats there. And the entertainment options, you see live band, karaoke, comedian, poetry, reading, trivia night, and a disc jockey with a dance floor. So this is the site plan I mentioned, and the couple of the improvements to the site through this process. Again, I mentioned the enclosure or the infill of the rear portion, the new covered stairway on the eastern side of the building. And they will, as required by the transportation staff and the Department of Public Works, they are closing the driveway closest on East Ocean View Avenue, closest to the intersection, and replacing it with sidewalk, curb gutter sidewalk and landscaping. And there's an existing, there's quite a substantial amount of existing landscaping and foliage on the site, a lot of which you'll see along the perimeter of the site, the eastern perimeter of the site, abutting the residential zoning district. So much like the last one, they have to buffer this use from the adjacent residential. And as you can see there, they have that opaque fence running along the perimeter of the site. These are the elevations, again, showing that infill of the rear portion of the building and the exterior stairway there. Again, the other two sides, rear and then the western side. And staff does recommend approval of these two conditional use permits subject to the conditions contained in the staff report, which conclude those site improvements I mentioned. Also, I will mention the Cottage Line Civically did send in a letter of support for this proposal. You know, I'll stand by for questions.
Thank you, Chris. No opposition to this application here on behalf of the applications, the applicant, Michael Stacks, Gary Greenwald here as well, and Justin Spruill. No opposition? If y'all have anything you'd like to add?
I'm on the next item. I'm on the next item. It's okay.
Oh, yes, you are. I don't know what's happening over here. The computer system's just fine. It's just Mr. Hale that gets heard about. Any comments, commissioners?
Sorry, I had a quick question. I didn't even know I was going to ask some question, but I'm curious. There was an LED sign...
We have to actually have you signed up to speak on that on behalf...
Go ahead and talk.
I can address that really quickly, Mr. Chair. I believe, if you could go back to the site plan, he's referring to the existing sign at the corner of Capeview and East Ocean View Avenue. And yeah, there is a condition in the, is part of the site improvements. The applicant does intend at this point to keep that sign. However, that will require modification of the sign to fully conform with the zoning ordinance, and part of that is that it can't have the LED portion, the movable sign as it did when it was a bank. So they couldn't...
You're saying that sign's coming down?
No, they just wouldn't modify. If there was anything like height or width or distance from the sign to the property, and if anything like that was not in keeping or in conformance with the zoning requirements, they'd have to modify it to be conforming. And then the LED portion that he mentioned is not allowed, so that would be removed. That part of the sign would be removed.
Great.
Yep.
Thanks, Chris. Does that answer your... Sorry about the parliamentary procedure, but we got your concern answered and addressed. Any comments, questions?
Okay, the motion is to approve the conditional use permits subject to the conditions contained in the staff report.
Changes?
Okay, Mr. Chair, by a six-to-zero vote, the commission has voted to recommend approval of the request.
Thank you. Good luck. We'll make that recommendation to council. New business item one.
This is a request for a development certificate, Aldi modifications of previously approved 21st Street PCO pedestrian commercial overlay development certificate to allow renovations to the facade at 730 West 21st Street.
Hello again. So as you just heard, this is a request for a development certificate for 730 West 21st Street. Certificate would allow building renovations and changes to the facade as part of a conversion of the space to an Aldi grocery store. Site's located within the 21st Street pedestrian commercial overlay, which requires a development certificate for any changes within the zoning district. So as part of this process, the development certificate had to go before ARB, which happened earlier this week, and they recommended approval by a seven-to-zero vote. This is the site plan for the proposed Aldi. Grocery store will be 23,087 square feet, was most recently occupied by a farm-fresh grocery store. In order to meet the parking location and access requirements of the PCO, the applicant will construct a three-foot hedge between the parking lot, 21st Street. These are the proposed elevations along 21st Street as well as the area facing the parking lot. The drawing on the top is along 21st, and the drawing on the bottom is the area that's facing the parking court. The applicant's proposing two different wall signs. The one facing 21st Street is six feet by seven feet, and the sign facing the parking lot is 10 feet by 12 feet. Both of these meet district requirements for sign size. Oops, sorry. A letter of support from the Big Ant Business Association was received on February 22nd, and the applicant is not requesting any waivers as part of this development certificate, and staff does recommend approval of this as well. Any questions?
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Here on behalf of this item, Justin Spruill and Robin Thomas. Anything additional to add, Robin?
No, just can I ask the questions if there are?
Sure, thank you. Questions, commissioners? Ready?
Okay, the motion is to approve the development certificate.
Any changes?
Okay, Mr. Chair, by a vote of six to zero, the commission has voted to recommend approval of the development certificate.
Thank you. Yep, thank you, guys. Good luck. Next, new business item number two.
So this item is a request to initiate a zoning text amendment to parts of the demolition process and the historic and cultural conservation portion of the zoning ordinance. So again, this is an initiation. We don't have the text here for you today. The Architectural Review Board is working on that text, and as they work their way through it, we will bring it as a formal staff report and information to you. But today's request is for you all to just initiate, allowing us to move forward with the ARB to create the language.
Mr. Chairman, just to amplify a little bit, the purpose of this is to improve the communication process that occurs around the potential demolition of buildings within historic districts, and it's related to several demolitions that we've had to deal with recently that you all are very familiar with. So this is a way to try to get more information out to the public in an earlier and more timely manner.
Go forward.
Okay, the motion is to approve the initiation of the text amendment. Mr. Chair, by a vote of six to zero, the commission has voted to initiate the text amendment.
Okay, thank you. Any other new business items?
One more. Add-on? We have the City Planning Commission annual report.
All right, thank you, members of the commission. It's my fault I get you get to stay here a little bit longer. I'll be quick. So it's that time of year again. Every year, this meeting, we ask you to approve the annual report of your processes from the prior year, so it's time now to review the 2018 annual report for the City Planning Commission. So we've been doing this since 2011. The report does summarize all of your activity for the year as well as the Architectural Review Board activity, including those ARB items that you don't see. So some certain items do go through directly from ARB and get approved then, but we do include those as well. So but primarily, it's about the activity of the planning commission during the year. So in summary, in 2018, commission met 21 times, held 12 public hearings, and acted on 167 items. Additionally, ARB acted on 108 items, a little less than half of which were seen by planning commission along the way. It was a fairly typical year. You see by the graph here, almost exactly on average in both numbers. And so you see that here. The 10-year average is 166 and a half items, and you all saw 167, so you're ever achievers in 2018. And you all, do you have a 96% approval rating for the year and just slightly over the 10-year average? What that shows, as we always say, and we always hear from you all, is the good work of our staff to make sure that the items that get to you are the items that are complete and well evaluated. So you don't have to deny as many as you otherwise would. So again, 2018, fairly average, fairly consistent with the 10-year period. As always, the bulk of the items that you see are conditional use permits. Up to March, they were called special exceptions, but conditional use permits are the bulk of what you see. 46% of them are related, of those conditional use permits are related to alcohol and entertainment. That's a decline from prior years. You're down quite a bit on that. We think that's a result of the new zoning ordinance, one of the, some evidence that some of the elements that we put in the new zoning ordinance to streamline processes are showing, bearing fruit going forward. So hopefully, we'll see that continue. City Council oftentimes, very often, agrees with your recommendations. You're at a 96% concurrence rate, which is fairly typical with where we always are. So I think that shows that City Council does appreciate and respect the work that you as a commission and our staff put into these applications. There were two items that council disagreed with Planning Commission on this past year, and one item was withdrawn prior to council that was recommended now by Planning Commission. So that one, just to be aware of. And again, the concurrence rate is dead on with the trend. ARB had a fairly typical year. It was quite different from 2017. Again, 96% of the items to ARB were approved that came through that group. So again, showing that I think we're on track with where we are, getting the items to the board that need to be gotten to. Of note, the ARB supported the creation of one new historic overlay district and four historic landmarks, so we are now up to 14, up to 13 landmarks just in the few years that, since we've been doing that, and adding another historic district is pretty significant as well. So just wanted to highlight that aspect of the work that both ARB and Planning Commission did this year on historic preservation. One of the other elements we always highlight in the annual report is our building permit, our building permit numbers. Again, just to show the results, the end results of where our work takes us. The easiest way to look at that is in residential dwelling units, and in 2018, Planning Commission saw, or I'm sorry, the city saw 735 new dwelling units permitted, which is pretty much right on average from the last 10 years. So again, it was a, 2018 was a very typical year through and through. And similarly with the number of units demolished. So you see that we netted as a city 526 dwelling units in 2018, and that's again, a fairly typical number, give you a sense of the number of residences we're adding to the city on an annual basis. You all don't just do, don't just handle the items that come to you for approval. You also work with our staff and others to consider other items. Obviously, the big thing over the last couple of years for us has been the new zoning ordinance. That was adopted in 2017, but it went live in 2018. It's been a big part of our workload over the last year. And you see here, there have been several other projects that we've been, we've been working on. You have, you as a commission have been a big part of these projects and will continue to be since several of them are not yet completed. And that leads us to our 2019 work program. This is just part of, this is just a sample. These are just the first items on the list. It's actually about a two-page list of items. So you see here, we're still, several of the projects that you've been working on the last several years with us are still in process, and we've got quite a bit more on the agenda in the coming year. And that's all I have. So just to let you all know, the annual report, as always, we ask that the commission recommend, it be approved, adopted, and sent to, sorry, sent to City Council. So our intention would be, should this report meet your approval today, that it would be sent to City Council tomorrow, and I believe we're intending a presentation on, or at least a summary of this in April at City Council potentially. So it's something that we always hear from council about how important and how much they appreciate getting this report from them, from the commission every year. And so with that, I'll answer any questions.
Thank you, Jeremy. Certainly on behalf of Chairman Fraley and my fellow commissioners, thanks to you and your staff for all the hard work you've done to make that a very successful year. Made some great changes that we see in the fruits of your labor. Certainly appreciate all your work. Commissioners, anything else to add? Okay.
The motion would be to adopt the Planning Commission annual report. Mr. Chair, by a vote of six to zero, the commission has recommended adoption of the annual report.
Okay, thank you. Any other new business?
No.
Anything from you, Mr. Malita?
No, sir.
All right. Director, anything?
Mr. Chairman, no, thank you.
Thank you. We're standing adjourned. Thanks for your patience with the new system. I think it was a success.
Okay, I'm not touching it. I'm just leaving. I closed it.
I closed it.